Whenever they say we're gonna be there.
She outta here.
What do we want, Clean House? If you want it right now, right?
Yeah.
If you want it right now.
That too.
We gonna say, "Dalton rise, Justice for the Neowood." He's the same hashtag that was even trending.
We coming there right now.
Because he been using that hashtag in my stuff.
Alright, y'all, let's move to the side. Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Justice for the Neowood.
Alright, so.
I'm up.
Take that back.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise. Justice for the Neowood.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise.
Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Justice for the Neowood. 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 Justice for Alexis Wilson. Justice for Alexis Wilson. Justice for Alexis Wilson. Justice for Alexis Wilson. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Dalton rise. Clean House 2025. 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 Dalton rise.
And then I said for Alexis Wilson. Oh, Alexis Wilson. Alexis Wilson.
Where you going? I mean, I don't know. I mean, there's something to manipulate. Oh, she hit.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, well, I guess Queen B. God's thanks. Queen B.
Yeah, yeah. I got both my hands.
She so fine. Hey, everybody here tonight. Everybody gonna be here for tips. The primary is February, but this is. Don't be nothing but February. That's what I mean. At the New Year's. This is the first one to every month. That's the record. I take your word.
What's going on, man? Hey. Jerry will save you all this shit. That's hard. That's hard.
Where do you buy the glasses?
I get my glasses from, uh, these guys. Uh, she don't, she sent out a watch. She come here every month. And I take my prescriptions. And I go and buy some glasses. She pay me. And mail me my glasses back. And only she had. She made her. I mean, she sometimes would ask me to buy them.
I bought them. She took two to it, I'm going to it. I love her. She is definitely doing an amazing job of putting out the thanks. We had a loud voice for this. And so I am here. People think I want to be in front, but I'm honored because Dalton never needed a navigator. It just had, I'm just backing up. So I appreciate it.
We appreciate everything that you have done.
That's it. And so today, you know, did that? Was that good?
It's good.
I don't know about another daughter. I can see him walking through the neighborhood. I ain't seen nobody.
Eighty-six year resident.
She saved my money, but she definitely not you. But you're not gonna see nobody with my glasses on.
No.
I think it's one lady. She had a pair like. And, uh, I heard something. So she's bringing on.
I was looking at her like, oh, it's snowing out. Yeah, I know.
Yeah. And Happy New Years, too.
Somebody hasn't seen yet?
All yours.
That was empty. No, I was going to save it for Lisa. She coming up though.
Play grade of, I think. Nice time out, too.
What time does the meeting start?
Six thirty.
Will I probably be here.
I can move.
Yeah.
No, just sit right next to him. Yeah, she can. I see you doing it all the time.
I bet you made it.
That'll be twenty-nine ninety-nine.
You touch it?
Probably neither is named Brandon. Morning, I can. But we'll see. I love Brandon. Stand right as a gift.
I don't know. What are they waiting for? They got their own time. They got anything. What are they waiting for?
I don't know. Wish they standing. Stand right as a thing.
They're talking about. They really talking about her, right? Please.
That's her excuse. She used to use that excuse to have. Mellow the topic, really talk over there.
Do you like to speak to everybody?
I just want to say that I'm glad that I was able to make it.
First off, you look very pretty today.
Thank you so much.
And I really love your hair. And I told you that earlier, but I just want you to know that I really do trust you.
Thank you very much. I'm just happy to be in the building and support for Neowood. Um, on this whole situation. And we hope to get a candle. I will be here every meeting until we be. Clean House 2025.
She probably not gonna show up today.
It was a credible threat.
Then she supposed to say, what did she say the last time? She supposed to show up and say vote nobody.
Right.
But.
And clown, uh, Carmen is talking about being great.
Nobody's going to touch her. They just want to hold her accountable. It's totally, I don't want to fight Tiffany. I don't want to fight her. Just hold her.
My lines are, I'm gonna be on. Look, I'm gonna be the first. I'm gonna be the first. I don't want to fight her right now. It's because, uh.
You know, my heart rate is not nice. Don't want to. Do you understand what a gentleman is? Maybe that's a word. She didn't learn it at all. But it's okay.
Right.
I think she's so, I think they has. Thank you.
Dalton rise.
She likes to come. Make us special interests. Into the interest. Uh? She sent out a letter saying the meeting was canceled. That's what she sent. But she can't hear me.
Sure, again.
At least that's what she said. So that's why I'm pretty sure she.
Yeah.
After that, after that, uh. Audio. Love Andrew Holmes.
I'm good, I'll use your phone.
Good.
Of course, no other way. And you already know this, so.
So that, that, uh.
I don't know. I know. That's why I said, I said, who can authenticate? That's the thing. You know, that's why I said, you don't pay me. Yeah, I don't. Uh, you know. It's real hard in audio, even video today. It's manipulated, so. It's real hard to believe media now. And I listen to the, um. Sounded like you. But like I said.
So this is one of the center that I made for her. So like, we see Brice and everything.
Yeah, I need, I'm gonna send you the message.
Okay.
He's gotta have turquoise in his tongue. Halloween. Right, right. That's the hottest thing right now. Looking at. All school. I love all school.
Hey, man, we're at Dalton today. We're filming a special meeting. Apparently, the world famous, uh, Mayor, Super Mayor Tiffany Henyard is not here. But, uh, we do have CBS, NBC. We had ABC, we have the anchor, one of the anchors, uh, sitting right here for, uh, ABC. And we have a couple of anchors for NBC and CBS in the back and Fox News. But, uh, the super mayor. Mayor Tiff Tiff is not here today. Or she may, she may turn up. What do you, what do you think, sir? You think she's gonna turn up?
She's not.
She ain't coming. She ain't coming.
She already sent out a letter saying that that was a credible threat and the meeting was canceled.
Oh, wow. And what, what was, what is a credible threat? What is she expecting?
I have no idea. That's her excuse.
Unbelievable.
That's her excuse. It's always her excuse. A creditable threat.
Credible threat, so.
Whatever that means.
Yeah, yeah.
It says to multiple elected officials, I was just reading.
Wow, because I, I do see, uh, some, uh.
It says here. To the resident of Dalton, members of our police department have informed me of a credible threat made against multiple elected officials recently. In light of these developments, I have decided to cancel the meeting scheduled for January sixth.
Oh, wow.
They in the man show up?
Yeah, so.
That's right here. What's going on?
I don't believe it.
No, um, just, uh, Jason House. Trustee. Trustee. She's, she's running for reelection. Tiffany, uh, Brice and Aunt Steve, who was a trustee. And lost out to Steve and Brown at the last.
Oh.
So... He's gonna be taking over for Jason, Jason.
Yeah.
She, she, she called Tiffany out, she's the one that called Tiffany out about the... Was Tiffany say she didn't see?
Yeah.
I'm at the meeting, she's, she's sitting there saying, you know, we gotta... We got a contract here for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, send those, I don't see that. I was like, she...
It's amazing how something small can...
I don't see that, I was like, yo, okay. Like we stupid.
Yeah. Got a couple of state's attorneys out here. Yeah, it's a big crowd. Yeah. I was gonna record, uh, separate, but I think I'll just leave it live. See how everything goes. Of course, oh, we, we want action, guys, we want action, action. Gonna be bringing you a lot of, uh... Chicago political videos. Chicago politics. Brought to you by producer Mark, the one and only baby. Definitely no watches here. That was so good. So loaded, that was so loaded.
Because they got their own mayor from every city, every city got their own mayor.
Yeah, exactly. And they all got their own food banks and all these other services that the village has already...
Wow, they, they got, they got state police over here.
Really?
Yeah, they got state police. And, and, and the county sheriff. Yeah, oh, yeah.
She gonna come out, she gonna come out. What you think they gonna do?
She ain't coming.
No, we don't... No.
She sent out the letter, did you see the letter? She came for the letter.
Are you serious?
I was just showing it to you.
The, the world, world famous guys. Yes.
I was there too.
No, no, she didn't come to that one.
Well, she was in court earlier today.
But, uh...
If you can hear me clap once? Can you hear me clap once? All right, guys, just a few announcements, we're about to get started in a little bit of our, um, senior trustee, Jason House, he's running a little late, but we know how the weather is out there, so we're gonna give him a little time. But even if he may get here, we still legally have to give, um, the mayor a little time to get here as well, um, assuming that she doesn't show up, and then, you know, the meeting will proceed accordingly. So I just wanted to let you guys know, um, that, uh, sorry, we're gonna start a little late, but we're here and we shall be starting shortly, and I do apologize sincerely for the short delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't rise.
Good morning.
Don't rise.
Clean house twenty twenty five.
Clean sweep. Justice for Fania.
Justice for Fania.
What, what, what is it called? Just Dalton politics?
Dalton politics.
So I don't know.
Well, you know, you should get on the page, that way you keep...
I don't wanna understand. I don't wanna read all that stuff, 'cause now my people are unhinged in that rock.
I don't, you know, I don't post too much, I... But it does keep me informed.
I don't wanna...
I listen to what people think and what people say.
But I don't wanna get deep, you know what I'm saying? My life is not in that, in it, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, it can, it can drag you in.
And intercepting and making...
It's like a quicksand. Yeah, like...
I'm not gonna put that mess in my life, I'm happy, I really am.
I know my wife, my wife says I was obsessed.
I think you are, but you're...
Man, I've, I've never seen so many cops in one place at one time. And, and, and we cover Chicago.
This woman is...
Even, even Brandon Johnson don't carry that many cops.
Don't rise. 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 Justice for Fania. Justice for Fania. Justice for Alexei. Don't rise. Don't rise. T P E got to go. T P E got to go. T P E got to go. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Clean house twenty twenty five. Clean house twenty twenty five. Clean house twenty twenty five. Shut us down. Shut us down. Shut us down. Shut us down. Justice. And what do we want on it? Now. Hey, what do we want? Justice. And what do we want on it? Now. Hey, hey. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Hey, hey. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Hey, hey. Don't rise. 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 One more time, y'all, for real, y'all make some noise, did y'all?
She's coming?
I don't know. I think she is.
She is.
She sent out the letter saying she...
Yeah, but I, I, I think, I think she would be.
She ain't here by Saturday.
She, she gotta show face, she can't just not come.
This is too... Now, if he was at the, if he was at Harvey, that was all her fault.
She got the Harvey Police Department. I, I was...
She got it, she got it.
Did you go to that meeting?
No.
I would've. I did watch it on, I did watch it. And I was like, this is a joke.
All they gotta do is look at the key people like yourself, they look at them like this. Yeah, yeah, they wouldn't, key people, yeah, they would've. I'm not the one to give them my, but I would've been there.
Harvey, Harvey's... Kellogg is not doing it. Kellogg is not doing it. It's worse than that.
Yeah.
She's supporting for you.
Yes, she is.
I see your faces.
Chicago politics, yeah, we, we have a lot of anchors out here today. ABC's out here too. We got ABC, NBC, CBS, we got Fox News. Shit, you know it's bad when Fox News is out here, you know?
Yeah.
They, that motherfucker, they got nothing.
I like what you say.
Yeah. Yeah, when, when Fox News is out here, you know it's bad.
It's bad, Fox.
Yep. They woke up this morning, where we going? We're going to Dalton. Yes, sir. I see, uh... Yeah, this, this is probably the biggest, uh... Media, yeah, media crowd today. We have, uh, Dalton Police, we have, uh, State Police, and we have, uh, Cook County, Cook County's out here. We have one of the trustees walking in right now. There we go. I think he's the one running from here. Yeah.
She ain't coming. She's not coming. She's... Oh, is she coming? Is, is she coming? We'll see. But she sure kinda come. But, but there was a credible threat. I don't know. But that's...
Do you...
No, that's her excuse. And according to her, it was multiple elected officials.
But everybody came.
I know. So, I don't, I don't know where she's talking.
Mark, pleasure to meet you.
Good evening, everybody, how are you today?
Good, good.
Always wonderful to see everybody, we, uh, we've been in court before, so the judge mentioned that the mayor pro temp ordinance, we have to make sure we at least allow time and opportunity for the mayor to attend. So we'll start the meeting at six forty-five to allow that opportunity in case the mayor, uh, has had a change of decision on canceling this meeting. Uh, so the meeting will start in five minutes to allow for that, I do not want Judge Fuwen to be upset with the board, and we wanna make sure we're following all laws and regulations. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, don't rise. 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 Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Justice. And what do we want? Now. What do we want? Justice. And what do we want? Now. Clean house twenty twenty five. 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 If you don't get it... Shut us down. 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 Hey, hey. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Hey, hey. Oh, oh. T P E got to go. Justice for Fania. Justice for Fania. Justice for Alexei. Justice for Alexei. If you don't get it... Shut it down. If I'm on the bus, if I'm on the track, what we do? Stand up my back. If I'm on the bus, if I'm on the track, what we do? Stand up my back. If I'm on the bus, if I'm on the track, what we do? Stand up my back. What we do? Stand up my back. What we do? Stand up my back.
Okay, time is six forty-five, so, uh, we will get ready, we will proceed with this meeting. Uh, I wanna open up because we know there was some confusion, a letter went out earlier today that the, uh, meeting was canceled, of course, the Board of Trustees had not received any, any evidence of a credible threat, nor have we heard anything about, have, have we been briefed on that? So, without getting that information, the meeting must proceed. We do have knowledge, of course, of a peaceful protest, the Board of Trustees recognizes and respects everybody's right to speak their voice, and we are here to hear your concerns. That being said, we, um, appreciate the manner and the energy in the room, we know that there's a lot of frustration, so please, as you come, let, let the board know, of course, state your, state your disagreement, or your, right? And then talk about what outcomes you would like, uh, as a board member, we're not preparing at the moment to be able to fix everything, but we need to hear your voice, and as we're doing our planning, we know what steps we need to take. And we'll do everything within our power to make sure that everybody is heard. So I wanna thank everybody for organizing and doing so peacefully, uh, let your passion speak, but without being disrespectful or, or creating conflict, right? So we appreciate that, we're here for it, I'm gonna, uh, turn over for a moment to our attorney, Mike and Raptor, so he can, uh, he can... he can clarify the legality of this meeting, and then we'll get started.
Sure, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Um, the meeting tonight was properly posted, uh, the agenda was put up in a timely manner. Uh, there was word that was put out by the mayor, uh, that there was some sort of a threat, obviously, uh, the board, as trustee House has stated, they're not aware of any threat, they've not been advised of any threat, and, uh, it doesn't seem like there is any threat. Uh, in the back of the room, there's a number of law enforcement officers from, uh, from the county, as well as your own department. Uh, if there was any identified threat, certainly they would let the trustees know, uh, they wouldn't let this meeting proceed, they wouldn't want anyone to be in harm's way. Uh, I think it's just a, a way of the mayor trying to attempt to cancel this meeting, knowing that there's, uh, a peaceful protest, or people gotta come up and speak their mind, and, uh, she don't want to face those people. So it's a proper legal meeting.
Thank you very much. With that being said, I will ask clerk Key for, uh, roll call, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming out. Trustee Tammy Baker-Brown? Trustee House? Trustee Norwood? Trustee Stan Brown? Trustee Holmes' accent? Trustee Belcher?
Here.
We have a quorum. And let me back up for one second. This meeting started at six forty-seven P.M.
Thank you very much, I'll ask everybody to stand up, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, please, I'll ask former trustee Valerie Stubbs, in prayer.
Good evening, everyone. Could you please bow your head? Heavenly Father, I come to you in the name of Jesus, just to praise your name another day, and thank you for your mercy and grace that you have stored upon us. Thank you for allowing us to assemble here today. Father, I ask that you give us traveling grace and mercy on the way home. Father, I ask in your son's name, Father, that you... Remove anything that's not of you out of these seats up here, Father, and do the will of the people, Father, so we can have peace. Thank you, Father, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Okay, one announcement from clerk Key?
Okay, for the record, I need to mention that the ma, the mayor is not present. So when I took the attendance, I didn't call her name. So Mayor Union is excellent.
Okay, so we will open with public comment, we'll ask anybody that has comments, please come up to the mic for three minutes to address the body, and we will, uh, advise as three-minute mark is approached. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, greetings in the name of the Father, uh, everybody. I heard those voices, you know, and all, all I'm gonna say to that man is that live every voice is singing, till it's in heaven ring. And let's keep the harmony going, 'cause see, if you gonna stand for one, you gonna stand for all. And here's my thing about how we stand. All this standing divided, this is exactly why we keep falling. And for every day that we don't stand divided, we fall even farther. Also heard the prayer. The bottom line is, we the people, this is where we clean house. Now, the truth of the matter is, our votes must count. We got a township closed, we got a village hall closed, and now she wanna call in a threat of, a credible, she is the threat. She is an outright, undograted threat. I said, I will represent it. You have threatened more people here than anybody I know, and she has no idea how many mayors I have been under. As I look out here in the audience, I know a lot of people. There's a lot of things I'm fed up, but this is nothing personal. I ask everyone here today, go beyond yourself, tell other people, go to the media, go, need to knock off this media stuff for a little while. The red, the thing I don't like, I don't see none of the people. But I always hear certain dignitary, and I'm, look, y'all, I'm past saying, I don't mean offense, y'all wrong. Y'all are wrong people. When your families can't come, what makes y'all think our families feel good coming? It is timeout. It doesn't matter whether you like me or not, 'cause see, the truth doesn't matter, there none of y'all create me. The one timeout to y'all constantly hear me saying, every last one of us, it, we human beings, unless you wanna act like an animal. When you wanna act like an animal, then you suffer the consequences. But when it all say done, you got citizens that are running for seats out here, half of the people don't know, they nominate people without your input or anything like that. This is how she wind up being a trithector. Because Christopher Gonzalez and all them sitting up there thought it was absolutely appropriate to keep a hundred and ninety thousand people out of here. They need to get the water together, y'all need to... Why, why are the people getting, uh, the, the cards for the bills? Did y'all know y'all not getting no more cards to put out your, your information for your water bill? They ain't got no more money for the yellow cards. What does that say? For everything they don't have, cast a vote against it. For everything they didn't get paid for, cast a vote against it. For every time your property tax make you wonder if you gonna get your house to your car. And I don't mean leave, 'cause half the people, they can't leave that egg. Look, it's okay for y'all to invite people here, and I'm not singling out nobody. Invite somebody here. Y'all keep saying save y'all. No, this is save ourself. This is save our community, and that's y'all job.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, I wanna ask, uh, mission to make this quick announcement, announcement if I can. Um, here is a notice of special township meeting of electors of Thornton Township. Notice is hereby given that, at the request of at least fifteen or more electors of Thornton Township, uh, there is a special meeting of electors that will be held January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at six P.M., at the South Suburban College. So, Lord, this is him, everybody will be able to come out and vote, amen? And I will give that information again, thank you all for allowing me to do that. Can I have my comment now?
What do we vote on?
Thank you so much. So, lately, I've been hearing individuals like Michael Smith emphasizing the importance of respecting the chair. However, I find it challenging to comprehend how we can extend respect to an inanimate object, particularly, particularly when the person occupying the chair fails to demonstrate respect for the people they are supposed to serve. It is essential to remember that respect is reciprocal, and trust must be earned. Since we as a community have not received either respect or trust, it is only reasonable that we would hold our respect, as it is a two-way street that should originate with the individual holding the position of authority. I would never respect someone who chose to fire a sexual assault victim to keep an alleged predator named Andrew Holmes in a seat just to vote her way. I would never respect someone who refuses to show empathy for the people who worked for and almost died for her while doing so. I would never respect nor vote for someone who uses her plow power to close down businesses, unless they agree to pay to play, so that she and her boyfriend can ride around as thou, using our taxpayer dollars. I am asking the seniors to do research... To discover why so many of us have been demanding that the super mayor step down from power. Do not be lured in by gifts that appear to be free, because they are not free. Since she has been in power, her decisions have not been made by consulting with the residents or the trustees.
We've been three minutes and ten seconds.
Okay, I had to make that special, just, I'm almost done. Her decisions have been made out of greed, not reason. And she has never responded to our request to show receipts. Her days in power are almost over, from this point on, her decisions will be made out of desperation, like they cage animals. I would end it with this. Mister Mayor, and I quote, "Animals do not respond to reason." Clean House twenty twenty-five, Dalton Rising! I stand with for now, justice for Allessa!
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanna, uh, let the residents know, every event that was held at Just Ice, every event that was held at Melanie Fitness Center slash Police Station was not voted on by the trustees. You have to have an intergovernmental agreement, uh, from these guys up here in order to hold anything in Dalton, everything that she have held in those particular places, I want you to know that they were illegal, illegal, every event. The skating rink is deplorable now. Uh, and this message, I really came here for her, I was hoping that she would be here today, because I wanna let her know, I wanna educate her. When I ca, when I called the village hall and asked for the alley behind my house to be plowed, public works, I don't own the alley. I'm retired, been retired for years. I don't have to go anywhere unless and I want to. And I called for my residents that live behind me, that get up every morning and go to work. I called for my neighbors adjacent to me, so they can get out of their garage. That particular day, she's a compulsive liar. That particular day, Tiffany, I didn't go anywhere, had nowhere to go, have a snowplow in my garage. So that was a bald-faced lie, and winter is coming up again, and it's the village's job to plow the alleys, because we live on a snow route. We cannot park in the front. And how dare she keep telling that lie that I called her, at no time did I call her, no time. She also have came by my house, ringing my doorbells, harassing me. I should've filed a suit against her, but I didn't, because I know that money go on the backs of us, and I'm not gonna do us like that. So, I'm gonna do it at the polls, and I'm asking everybody to come out and draw February the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, a clean house. And we need to hold sleep. I need everybody that's on their ticket. We can't pick and choose, because they can't sit up here by themselves. They have to have everybody. Mister Brown, I'm so disappointed in you, I could just throw up. But I wish that you would have a heart and open your eyes to what's really going on, because this woman have robbed us blind. This is about all of us, not some of us. And incidentally, residents, Valerie Stubbs will be on the ticket for Thornton Township in twenty twenty-five, in April, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, I'm glad to actually successfully make one of these meetings, I've tried a couple times. It was a little bit crazy in the summer, and there were apparently two meetings in December, and I went to the wrong one. So I want to clarify, Legal Counselor, thank you very much, go correct, I contacted the, uh, deputy city clerk this afternoon, just to verify that we were gonna be here. And it was clarified to me that, yes, the meeting was still very much on. So, whatever this is that apparently certain somebody was talking about, that's really recent. So, thank you very much for being here. Um, additionally, I have my own concerns. I recently found out that animal control is not properly licensed by, uh, sort of bureau here in Dalton from the Department of Agriculture, and I'm still trying to figure out exactly how the police properly get a hold of animal control in the area. And as the previous speaker mentioned regarding the snowplowing, I have my concerns, that I'll be going to be ready for when the next actual winter storm comes, to plow the roads properly in Dalton. So I would ask that as much as you guys are able to keep the, uh, keep the streets clean and ready to go, please, keep up with that. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
I have to apologize to everybody, I ran out the door with the wrong glasses, so bear with me. This was directed towards the mayor, who's not here, but I'm gonna still talk about it, because there's people that are not on social media. I get a lot of people that message me, especially my brother, what's going on there? I'm not there. So this is the major question that's asked me about, what's going on here? They wanna know what the mayor's greatest accomplishment in Dalton is. What is a one accomplishment that has benefited the residents here? Especially like my aunt, who's a senior citizen. Or the friends that I know that still have family here, or even you out here, what is her major accomplishment? Well, I see a lot, driving around, I read a lot on social media, and I see the news every day. Isn't her major accomplishment the eighteen thousand dollar banners that we all know about on Sibley that were hung up there with her face on it, her name? And I love this one, she's a role model for the youth. I'm gonna come out and say this, my husband and I were driving, we were the ones that found banner in the street that was running, getting rolled on. We took it where it belongs, to the police station. I, I had a lot of bids for it, believe me. I wanna know, and we know those banners were paid for, and we know what happened to them, we all saw it. Or is it her major accomplishment the seventeen, approximately seventeen empty businesses that are up and down this street? When I was here, there was never an empty business. Or wait, is it that trip she took, that she said she went to a conference to get businesses to come here? Or is it the fifty thousand dollars that she spent, a taxpayer money, on a police station sign on an empty building? The taxpayers are paying the utilities for. Well, we know she don't wanna sell the building, because that's her playground. She has to go do Super Bingo when she can, or halt her parties. How about the signs around town that I see, coming soon? I've seen them forever. I love the waterpark one. If you know Greenwood, it's not Y. It's long, but not Y. And, and it's full of electrical wires, so what is she thinking? I like the coming soon, the boot trucks. Wait a minute, there's no businesses down Mountain Luther King Drive. She wants two restaurants, the Venice Park, yes, I believe that should happen. I do like the state of the arts sports complex that she wants to build, but what about the empty buildings? What about the empty buildings that are still sitting there, that you can't tear down? Okay? This, I'm just talking about the, the tip of the iceberg, and especially when we had it here from Mayor Lightfoot. Yeah, she said her major accomplishment.
Three minutes, fifteen seconds.
All I wanna say is, Mayor Tiffany, you're watching, do you think one day that they are gonna have a memorial park in your name?
Three minutes, thirty seconds.
I stand up for all the Dalton and Thornton Township residents. I stand up for all of Dalton and Thornton Township residents.
We're just trying to say, when everybody gets up to speak, can you please state your name? That's all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela Hubbard. I'm here to inform the mayor. Tiffany Henyu and Kamal Woods came short on their rent payments from August 2024 through December 2024. Just this morning. Now it's January 2025, and as of today, you are late. So don't forget to add all the late fees. Although I'm not part of the litigation, I am Janetta Hall's mother, Janetta Hall's mother, and standing here in her stead. I've been watching all your shenanigans for about four years and truly can't keep up. Thanks to NBC, five reporter Regina Waldrop's documentary, The Cost of KI and God, a few weeks ago, that detailed most of her underhanded VA. Tiffany, you always say, let me educate you. Well, yes, you have educated us on what to do when renting to a tenant. We will for sure do our due diligence for future tenants. An example, background checks, maybe even fingerprints and blood drawn. Thought we were good on renting to a mayor and her God. Boy, were we educated. We thought we were doing you a favor by looking out for your safety and keeping you low-key when it came to the lights and gas bill not being in your name. Tiffany, you and Kamal are simply wrong and should be super tired of this debacle. Tiffany, you have disgraced the town of Dalton, Thornton Township, and I'm sure your own parents. Now you are commingling in Thornton Township funds allegedly. I once heard you quote Dr. King about being the dream. No tip, you are a nightmare. The audacity of your Kamal to change locks, garage codes, and not giving Janetta access to even inspect your Harvard house. Reminder, it is illegal. Illegal. Reminder, Zoom eviction court tomorrow, 1:00 P.M. I believe Tiffany and Kamal were trying to steal my daughter's house from under her and probably turn it into an Airbnb. Or sell it to a friend for a few thousand dollars. I pray you do the right thing, Tiffany and Kamal, that you voluntarily pay up your rears and submit keys. You messing with a black woman that's in power, and that's Janetta Hall, the landlord, the owner of the current mayor and Kamal. One last note. I stand with Jedediah Brown, a wise man who knows how to advocate truth and justice. I stand with Ms. Faniya Deuce. May God continue to give you strength. Justice for Janetta Hall, the landlord. With all this being said, these better have her money.
That's going to be a hard act to follow. However, this has been well documented. Oh, I'm sorry, I just want to state my name. My name is Dan Lee. Almost forty years in Dalton, whatever. I lost track. But anyhow, I want to concentrate more on us. I don't want to talk about the wannabe dictator dingbat, disrespectful individual that's not here right now. So what I'm going to do is ask you a question. Most of you, most of you all know what an exorcism is? Okay, we're in the midst of that process right now. And to complete this exorcism, we need to show up on, I believe the young lady said, the Town Hall meeting is on January the 21st at South Suburban College. We need to pack that 900-seat venue. That way, we get that vote through Thornton Township, including Dalton. We will make her completely irrelevant to the processes of our government. We get that done. We get that done. We don't have to worry about her ransom, her raise. She can't stop anything. Obviously, she doesn't know that there's a quorum here. I don't know if, I don't know how much she's paying her lawyers, but they should read some of this stuff to her because I don't think she understands. We do not need her right here in this venue because we have a quorum. We swing this thing in Thornton Township, we'll have a quorum in both places. She can dance her little silly ass wherever she wants to go after that. She can be late, not show up, it will make no difference. We will continue to move forward without her. Now, we got hashtag Dalton Rising and Justice for Faniya. I love all of those. But this is going beyond hashtag. Now, we're in a movement. And every last one of you that comes in here that contributes to Clean House 25, that supports us, you are part of the movement now. This is, this is no, this is no plaything right now. We can do this. We will do it. Whether she likes it or not, that's irrelevant. Now, if you happen to look up on the... Okay, I want to speak to all the people in here that I haven't seen in here before. I ain't trying to bust nobody out, but damn, can't y'all do this a little more often? I'm just asking, you know what I'm saying? This, if we could keep protests like this at both venues, we need to form a partnership between the voters in Dalton, which we are part of Thornton Township. And if we could get the trustees to communicate with each other, we can build a South Suburban powerhouse. We can stop this from ever happening to us again. All we have to do is stand together. Together, we are much stronger.
Three-minute mark.
Me, me. I just want to say for one more thing. Part district. I don't know if you all went to the last team of the trustees. They gave a beautiful presentation. We are on the way up. Dalton Rising is not just a slogan anymore, it's a reality. So thanks for the part district once again. We going to do this, and we going to do it. We going to ascend to the top.
Yes, we are.
Good evening, good evening. Former future trustee Edward Steen. That's two first names. I want to commend the board of trustees for conducting this meeting tonight. I want to commend and give my shots and spread prayers to Sister Faniya. I heard that video, that terrible video. And I commend your strength. I commend Jan for shifting her focus back to what's important because they were getting bold. She thought she had something with the caucus, and she was really doing interviews. And Andrew was really getting bold, talking about my minister, Minister Hoosier. Compared to the minister, comparing him to Father Flag and black people. He got real bold, like he ain't do none of that stuff. How dare she compare herself to Hillary Clinton? Black leaders who sacrifice for black people. So it's an embarrassment we're at. She's duping the seniors residents. She is duping the seniors. So when you see your senior residents, tell your, tell, how do you feel if she did that to your daughter? Kick her to the curb or fire her? How do you feel if she did it to your sister, your niece, your nephew? Nephew, niece, granddaughter, anybody? This is the reality that we deal with. So I commend the fight. I commend what we're at. And it's time for us, as Jason said, change the narrative in Dalton and Clean House 2025. While we're on the next speaker, I want to give an acknowledgement to former Commissioner Kevin Bowen, the change the narrative originator with Clean House 2025.
Good evening, all. My name is Mary Avant. I am also running for trustee in Thornton Township. Just keep that name in mind. I don't want anybody to accuse me of anything, but I thought I was going to be able to let my mayor know just how much she educates us. Every time she gets to the podium or gets the mic, she tells us that we have a dictator trying to take over now. And they locked them out of the caucus. But she seems to forgive. All they did was take a page out of her book. Didn't she lock us out in the cold and in the rain? So we're going to educate her. But if I don't do anything else tonight for my brother Jedediah, who put this movement together, I'd like for everyone in here, and if you ain't on outside, don't clap. We don't really give a damn. Give yourselves a round of applause.
That's my mom, Mary. So listen, I have probably been to several of these meetings and have never hit this podium. I'm here today, though, I'm not talking about Tiffany. I think we've talked about her enough. I think we've given her enough airtime. So my response is to this board and to Jason, who will be our next mayor for two years. There is a lot of damage that has been done. And I'm not going to tell my name because I fear for my life if somebody out. Breaking. There's been a lot of damage done. I commend the board for staying focused and not entertaining the entertainment. Because it's been some entertainment, right? However, what I want to say to you is, please, I'm begging you, show us something different. We are trusting you to take this garbage and make it into something that Dalton can be proud of. And you guys will be the ones that will be your name in lights because you were able to turn it around. We are trusting you. We are putting faith in you behind putting faith in God. We are praying that you continue to stay focused and do the right thing.
Good evening, everybody. I'm so sure. My name is Patricia Kennedy. I normally don't get up and speak, but it has got so bad that I said I need to say something. I've been out here since 1977. When I moved out here, they didn't let anybody buy these houses out here. And it was so peaceful. We had a swimming pool. We had things for our kids to do. And if you, if you didn't work and you lost your job, you would go to Thornton Township, they would pay your rent. They would give you the money right there. And I, and I, and so as years went by, I worked. I raised my kids, my grandkids, my foster kids. And now I look around, I said, why am I still in Dalton? And then people are coming to me, Ms. Kennedy, don't move. But then when I look across the street and I hope like us nice, but we got five houses vacant. We cannot sell. If you call the Anvett and I tell them I'm living in Dalton, oh, we not coming out there. So I'm telling everybody, I don't like when people come to me and tell me, well, Tiffany got another site. No, look right around. Look at all the vacant houses. Talk to the trustees. They wouldn't lie. They wouldn't sit up here and be fighting. So I want everybody to start talking to the people. You must vote. Don't play. You've got to vote. We don't have to call her names and all of that. Just when you go, vote, put her in there. Put them in there, not her. So everybody, please, is getting, we don't want it to look like Harvey. And like I say, it's too many vacant houses now. And I wanted, I wanted to move, but I can't sell my house. My kids don't want it. And I put a lot of money into it. So everybody, please, please vote. Else it's going to look like Harvey.
Before we, before we go, I, I'm just out of curiosity. Is anybody in here from Harvey? Right here. No shade Harvey, no shade. We natives, no shade. Absolutely.
Resupport Harvey. Resupport Harvey.
Hey, Dalton. My name is Chappelle Hutz. I am a Harvey Library Trustee. Newly elected 2023. I thank the people for the 1,490-something votes. I ain't going to go with the 82% because just so clear, you know, math ain't math. But, you know, I stand with y'all. I love the fight. I love to see the people that come out and y'all standing on y'all business. You know, but I will say this. This must be a, a, a round table because I think Tiffany, Clark, and Thaddeus, all of them sitting around the table together. And they, they dishing out their plans because everybody looking at them. All these cities is going through the same thing.
Right, right.
The only difference is y'all can talk at y'all meetings. We can't. We go to jail. We get $500 disorderly conduct fines. I'm fighting one now. You know? But, you know, I, I, I stand with y'all. I really love to see that you guys know what you want. You know what you want in this community. You know what they are planning to give y'all. That's why y'all standing behind them.
Right.
Go to the polls. Vote. Talk to these young, young folks. Get them to come out here and vote. Because the more you put them on, the longer your community will be the way you want it to be. That's where a lot of stuff has fallen off is because our kids are not getting up in here and they not vote. So we have to continue this fight. This fight that y'all doing, bring these kids. Let them see. Let them see your fight. Let them carry this fight on. Don't, don't let it stop with us. Let it go. Let it go farther. So when we, when we there, they going to be, we ain't got, we can die in peace because they going to be living the dream that we want. Because the dream she talking about, I don't see. Unless I'm sleepwalking or something, I don't see. But I'm telling y'all, continue the fight. I will stand with y'all. It's Harvey in the house, we back there. I love y'all. Continue to watch my Facebook blast because guess what? We going to put some of these people on blast. All right? Clean House 2025.
Good evening. I'm not going to drop anything because she's not here.
We love you, baby.
But what I want to do is say to everyone of you all, thank you for allowing me to share this movement with you. We have gone, we've had some highs and some lows, but we going to be all right. And I just want to say this. So the history will have it right. And I appreciate everybody. I don't really need applause or thanks. I did not start a movement, I joined it.
Yes.
I am echoing it, and I endeavor to be the one in your, in your back. I just want to definitely tell another young man who I have watched this process, Nate Fields, I'm damn proud of you. It really should have been a better clap, but I'm damn proud of you. And as somebody who wants to aspire in certain places, don't stop, keep going. God has a way of making it happen. But I want to thank Sherri, Alicia, The Roberts, Thelma, Dr. Cloud, Stephanie, Dan Lee, Vivian, Sheila, Mary, Valerie, and everybody that did not name because as of today, you have your focus and you have your movement. And these are the words that are very simple. I'm now going to step aside and be the wind in your back from my respective place, but y'all got it. And I'm confident victory is near. With that being said, I'm now going to ask y'all to do me a huge favor. And let's give this woman an extremely warm welcome. We are not releasing them doing any more videos because we're waiting for them. But y'all, please give her the most love and the warmest welcome as she takes her three minutes. Y'all stand, y'all feed if y'all don't mind for Faniya Deuce.
I want to start by saying thank you, like, y'all don't even understand how beautiful. Y'all look good in this room, y'all look amazing, and I am beyond blessed. I'm beyond grateful to have every single one of you here for, for me, for Alexis, for Ms. Janetta, for you to be an Dalton resident, for you to be a township resident. We standing up for ourselves, and this is what it look like. I thought I was gonna be here standing up for myself, by myself, but look at y'all, right next to me. I love y'all too. The most thing I want to say though is, and I have been getting a lot of slack because of how I've been, and oh, yeah, well, you don't look too sad, you couldn't be evicted off. Yeah, you smiling too much, people not gonna think something's wrong with you. Well, they picked the wrong person. They made my narrative, what my narrative been, I didn't ask why, actually, probably would have been still running under her jail, and investigating. Then this would be my own narrative, I really had, I really would have, because why would anybody want this to be in my debt? So for the negativity that I have gotten, and that I've asked for this, I'm a prayer for you. But everybody else who's behind me. Upstairs. Clean House 2025, justice for Alexis Wilson, justice for Ms. Janetta, thank you to everybody, I love y'all. We got this, we got this.
I'm gonna use a couple of his ministers to say one thing really quickly. It is my understanding that we have something to correct, Andrew Holmes is not, was not married, but it appears that he apparently has got engaged on Sunday. Okay, but also, congratulations, uh, heaven. And so, the other great master, Alicia, this is his ministry, give me his ministry. And so this is the last thing, I want to be very clear to you all, please consider not attacking anybody that we involve, and let the facts come out. I see people have comments about officer mouths, please, give it a moment. He can't speak for himself, I can't speak for him, there are a lot of things that has not come out. But I want y'all to understand this, when that day happened, uh, uh, the mayor was, uh, had, she had a surgery, and people was trying to tend to her, they was trying to get her back, there was somebody that was detained, but it was not for the sexual assault. And, and it was, everybody was told one thing, that she didn't feel right in her body, they did not know exactly what it was. So public, please, hold your judgment and let the facts come out, it will come out, and I'm a firm believer in one thing, the wheels may turn slow, but they do turn, justice will be done.
Good evening, everyone, Jeb does this to me every time, he makes me follow him, and he's, I hired him to follow, but please, everybody, I'm giving up some of my time to give the hugest shout out to Jeb. Look at all this camouflage, please, everybody, touch our hands together, because he has done so much. Thank you, guys, thank you for that, justice for Fania, justice for Alexis Wilson. Um, I want to start by, one, thanking the board, um, Mayor House. You know, I just want to say, you know, I chose to volunteer for their campaign, meeting boots on the ground with it, okay? So, you know, I've been making phone calls, have, have had a great response, and I'm happy to report that, like, I didn't reach one Tiffany supporter. Actually, one undecided, but my goal is to flip them. But, um, anyway, you know, the one thing that I was a little taken aback by, when I asked the residents if they wanted a sign, because mind you, they were emphatically for Clean House 2025. Some of them, I didn't even have to give my elevator pitch, and they were already on board. But then when I went ahead and I asked them, like, well, would you like a yard sign? They're like, oh, no, no, they are spooked by this administration, and that is horrific, okay? That you can't just rightfully support a candidate without worrying about backlash. That is the main reason, excuse, my name is Alicia Nicole, the ma, I am a Thornton Township resident. I wasn't gonna go back and forth with Tiffany's goons, um, I don't trust her, her, her people, I fear for my safety. They, uh, William Moore, administrator, made a very deliberate, inflammatory, antagonistic comment at the last meeting, saying that I wasn't a resident, I don't have this kind of time to just be up here without a, a horse or a dog in the fight. I definitely have a dog in the fight. Another thing, you know, one, um, senior citizen asked me a few weeks ago, she actually came up, she approached me, she hugged me, I hugged her, and then she said, just be quiet, just, just don't say anything, just wait. With all due respect, absolutely not, there is no way I'm gonna sit here and not say anything to, to, to the administration, it's just, just rogue. Gutted, every, every bad adjective you can think of. Also, um, seniors, I want you guys to know, I understand you like Big Bingo. This board has provided everything that Tiffany feels like she's at the helm of, only her being able to provide. They do bingo, they do senior luncheons, they do toy giveaway, they do everything that Tip tries to make you think that she only has the power to do. So please take advantage of those things that the Dalton trustees are throwing there on the up and up. They just had a, um, like a, a boot camp for residents, they show that they care by their actions in so many different ways, and it's not self-serving.
Three minutes, Mark?
Uh, three minutes? Ah! Thank you, Clean House 2025.
I have honest, I can honestly say I've never done a public comment. And you know, I found it interesting, because you know, when I came to Dalton, I came on the other side, and, um, I was told, you know, I had a heart attack, and I was told that, um, that wasn't an excuse to call off of work, but then here we are, calling off of work, sis, huh? Because people don't like you, I don't like you. However, um, that's still not an excuse to call off of work. In fact, the truth be told, I had two heart attacks, and I am still here at work. I got threatened by one of her coonies texting my phone, telling me about new comments that they would do to my thirteen-year-old daughter. But I still came to work. I got a death threat last week with her, um, board meeting that she had here for the township, because someone was afraid for their life, and they asked me, as I'm here at work, to call the police. I got a text message that said, excuse me, I'm, guys, I'm gonna get you, bitch. But I still came to work, and guess what, today, I am still here at work, because guess what, what you're not gonna do is stop me, because the Bible says a clamorous woman is foolish and know of nothing, and I am not that. This ain't that, and I am not afraid, and I'm gonna continue to come to work, because I have a moral obligation to the people of Dalton and Thornton Township, to show you what integrity look like, to help you build the, the community that you guys deserve. Clean House 2025, I'm not backing them because it's a job, because quiet, it's kept, I'm good. I'm backing them because it's the right thing to do, and it's residents you guys deserve, and if you don't see that by now, I don't know what to tell you. So what I'm gonna tell you right now, tomorrow, I'm gonna be back at work, next week, I'm gonna be back here at work. Because what you won't do is run me off, and you can take that to the bank, so that's how we do when we educate you the right way. Dr. Nikita Cloud, who holds a PhD in organizational leadership. I also have an honorary doctorate, because out of my philanthropy work, I also have a master's degree in journalism, I also have a bachelor's in communications. This is what I do, so when you come and come for my credentials, when you try to come for my integrity, one thing you can't come by, for me, is what I do and my work ethic. So guess what, Tiffany, I challenge you today, come to work, sis.
I gotta follow that up, I've only got a bachelor's degree. So, uh, my name's Kurt Marcucci, um, some of them are mischievous, sir, bro. Um, I didn't grow here, I flew here, but, um, I admire you all, because everyone here is about to do what I did to Tiffany, and that was evict her ass. How, how you doing that now? I've heard about some of these yard signs being stolen, and people that are afraid to put a yard sign out. Anything that's in your yard is your property, if you get your yard sign stolen, go to the Dalton Police Department, file a police report. I'm sure they'd be more than happy to assist people with stolen property, am I correct?
No.
Okay, we got a thumbs up. Make a police report, put a no trespassing sign, little no trespassing sign in your front yard, then you got them for trespassing. Now, about half of you know how to get ahold of me, the other half knows someone who knows how to get ahold of me. If you want to help catch these SOBs that are taking the signs, get ahold of me, we'll lay a trap, we'll have the evidence, we'll throw the cuffs on them, because in the words of Dee Snider, a twisted sister, we ain't gonna take it anymore. Clean House 2025.
All right, so I'm coming after Kurt, um, I just want, I want to be quick, I'm not gonna take the whole three minutes like I did last time. I just want to say, first off, thanking trustees, again, as always, for you guys providing a safe place for all of us residents. Despite what the mayor said about her threats, we feel very safe and very welcome here. So we do thank you guys for making sure that we can all come and be able to attend a Dalton board meeting. Um, I just want to say to Fania, I'm so sorry about what happened, we won't stop fighting for your justice, because we understand what you went through, and it's sad that you wasn't coherent and didn't know what he did, but we all understand what you went through, and we are not gonna stop our fight. As far as everybody, I just want to tell y'all, y'all look so good in here, y'all need to give yourselves a round of applause for all coming out, for all showing up, with your camouflage, with your black, everything that we ask for you guys to show up in. Dalton is rising, we are on the up and up, it's Clean House 2025, um, we got this, from here on out, we gonna clean the house, um, we gonna clean this township, and we just gonna get everything back to what it's supposed to be. Once we finish the elections, then we gonna party. Y'all don't even understand how big this party is gonna be for Dalton and for the township, because we gonna be rid of, as Stanley said, a cancer, a cancer that have been in our environment for way too long. And now, we are Clean House 2025, we at the finish line, we got this.
I want to thank everybody for the comments, they have a conclude public comment, and we'll move into our general announcements. I do want to give an acknowledgement, uh, as Ms. Vivian, uh, said, the thank you goes as well to Dalton Park District. Let's give them a round of applause for the partnership. President, I see Cleo Jones is in the back, President Jones, raise your hand, please. Any other commissioners present, we have Willis, Harris, that Commissioner Wells, okay, I see it with the mask, okay. Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Harris, please raise your hands, everybody give them a round of applause. Thank you for that partnership, the partnership is the way that we will improve our village moving forward. Uh, that being said, I'm gonna open up the floor for general announcements from anybody on the board.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Bunch.
Happy New Year, everybody. Um, I know, Tammy normally do team with the trustees, but I'm still up on it today. Uh, we have team with the trustees, uh, next Saturday, January eleventh, at nine thirty, um, as we've been doing since 2021. Um, this is the way that residents can come out and have questions answered that are not being answered at the board meeting. So, um, if you know a neighbor or have questions, and this is in reference to things that's going on in your community, issues with, um, like, a, a lot of different things, but I know people are concerned that they make statements and they don't get the answers that they want. So, uh, we will continue to have team with the trustees every second Saturday, uh, nine thirty, and is here at the Dalton Park District. Um, my next statement is, I, y'all look so good out there, and the reason I say that, it was funny, because I was, uh, I would like to thank the Dalton Police Department for coming out and just doing their job, because, I mean, we pay taxes, so I, I definitely want to thank the Dalton Police Department. But, um, I kind of don't listen to YouTube unless somebody tells me to watch it. And when I heard Jedediah say, um, he was at war, he started playing our song, I said, okay, I think I'm ready, I got my battle boots on. I said, because she always say we at war, but now when it's being reciprocated the other way, she don't want to show up for the fight. Yeah, but, um, I was just like to say, everybody stay encouraged, we have fifty days, fifty days. And those fifty days, let me say this, it's not gonna be your pretty, it's not gonna be pretty. Y'all about to get some of the craziest things, because all of the lies is coming out, and all of the, everything that somebody can do to save themselves, because they know the time is up, the gig is up. So, um, please, Jess, if y'all have questions, reach out to us, I think many times when people send us emails, phone calls, I think we all here are diligently, um, we're getting back, especially if we don't have the answer, we try to make sure we can get the answer. But stay focused, stay the course, this next fifty days will be trying times for all of us, all of us. But we have something to prove, we have to prove that residents are coming out and they want a change. We cannot have another four years of what we've been through. We can't, and this is not political, this is personal, this is our livelihoods, this is our tax dollars. Every day, we get emails from people saying we owe them money, but yet, nobody has said to person that spent the money, has went on about their way and now spending all our township money. One point three million dollars for ice rink, don't forget it, fifty thousand dollars for a police sign, don't forget it. Don't forget the things that happened three years ago, people are blind about what happened, and then they forget stuff. We have to realize this, what has happened to us over the last three and a half years, we're gonna have to dig ourselves out of this mess the next four years. So please be patient, please stay observant to what's going on, because you gotta ask questions, you gotta ask questions, and you entitled to ask questions. So, um, I'd just like to say, thank you all for that, send the prayers, send the shout outs, and just stay vigilant for the next fifty days, thank you.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah.
Hey, guys, hello, everyone, happy Monday, um, to all of you, Happy New Year, I'm so happy to see you all. Uh, we made it, and I just want to say, start off by saying, God is good all the time, all the time, God is good. Um, as we all know, I'm the, the chair of the youth committee, and it's extremely important to me that we keep the youth active. So we're gonna have our fourth annual family skating night, um, this January thirty-first. We switch things up just a little bit, so this particular time, it'll be at Glenwood Skating Rink, at a six-five-six Holbrook Road in Glenwood, Illinois, and it's from five PM to eight PM. So you all know my motto, a family that skates together stays together, okay? So you all come out, um, it's free for all Dalton residents, we will have some refreshments, and if you all could do me a huge favor and register, you can register by calling me or texting me at a seven zero eight nine six eight four two seven. Be there, be me there. I would also like to, uh, take a moment to thank the amazing students at my alma mater, Thornton Ridge High School, for welcoming me, along with Senator Harris, Dalton Park District, and the high school, um, high society management PR, my favorite PR. As we surprised them with Nick Cannon's MTV Wild and Out, uh, this was just so amazing to me, I think I was more excited when we graduated from Thornton Ridge, I felt as if we never had a concert, none of the four years. So, uh, this was a great time for the teachers to, and the principal, special thank you to the principal who also joined us. But the teachers, uh, specifically picked certain students, so they picked the honor students, and they wanted to thank them. And to, um, show them that it's always great to be great, so they had the free concert, um, and I would like to thank them for just participating, understanding how important it is for us to not leave the youth out. And then my last message is to all of us. And then, my last message is to all of us. I've been speaking with residents for the last few weeks. And I just want you all to know that we are all in this together. This has not been the easiest, right? But it's something that we were put on here to do, we put here to do. I'd like to thank our board of trustees for simply just working together. I don't know if people know, we don't always talk about how trying these times have been, right? We're saving police cars, we're saving, trying to save money. We're just always trying to find ways to keep the residents first and prioritize the spending. And that's, I know sometimes people say, "Well, you don't like all the argument and bigger." I just want the residents to know that if you don't stand for something, you fall for anything. And we don't want to argue or fight. But what we do want to do is keep our end, our bargain. We made plea to the residents. And when you all chose us, you chose us to make the right decisions, and you believed in us. So, I just want to say that I don't take that for granted. I thank you all for just allowing me to fight this great fight, right? I understand now why there's this thing called checks and balances. Because that's what we're here to do, right? No one person can make all the decisions. And it's just so that we can have some type of system. So, I just want you all to know, we don't want to argue and fight, but we are here to do the will of the people, and that's what we're going to continue to do. I thank you all. I admire you all so much for spending time with us on this cold, cold Monday, right? But God is good, guys, and I just thank you. And we'll get through this. We are all better together. There's this adage that I like, that I love, actually. And it says, "If you want to go fast, go alone. But if you want to go far, you go with a team." So, I'm thanking residents for just lifting me up when I'm like, "Ooh, Lord, what are we going to do next?" Right? But you all keep us inspired. I thank the trustees for listening to me when I call them, just to pray, and just to let them know that we're going to get through this. So, I thank the board, and I thank everyone. Forty-eight more days and counting, we have this.
All right, Jess, I guess I'll be the last. Just want to also say Happy New Year. Glad to see everyone this evening, so glad that you came out. But I want to make an announcement. Back in December 21st, we had an expungement summit, but it was in the city, in the city of Chicago. And we had 150 people register, which was an awesome turnout. So, we're going to do the same thing here in Dalton, February 22nd. We're also going to have that campaign that says, "Say yes to a second chance." Free, free, free record expungement opportunity. We will have attorneys here taking out their time, no charge. All that you would need for that day is actually a copy of your record. But the expungement will be here. It says, "Join us on February 22nd, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, for a life-changing event dedicated to helping individuals in the Southland of, I mean, the South suburbs. Take the first step toward a brighter future. Seawell Point is proud to present Say Yes to a Second Chance Campaign. Again, a free record expungement opportunity designed to empower youth to heal, rebuild, and believe in the possibilities of 2025." It says, "Our theme is to heal the Southland." It is about creating a pathway to hope, new beginnings. We believe everyone deserves a second chance, but mostly important, you need to give yourself that chance. Have faith, step forward, and open the door to opportunities for a better life. This event will be held right here in this room, February 22nd, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It says, "Let us come together to heal, restore, and step into a new, full life of possibilities." So, if it's not you, I'm sure we all have someone and we know someone. Please come out and take advantage of the things that are actually offered. I was so amazed to listen to some people give their testimonies, how they made mistake years ago, 25, 34, 40 years ago, and how their records have been expunged or sealed. So, again, please come out, take advantage of the great things that we are offering and want to bring to Dalton. Again, if you got any questions, please see me after the meeting. I will have a flyer to come out shortly. But again, I want to thank everyone, and again, thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Any additional comments? All right, I have, I have two announcements, well, maybe three, we'll see. So, I do want to also let the community know that we've made changes to our Village Adult website with the assistance of our village administrator, along with the Communications Department. So, I want to give them their credit, along with High Society PR for developing it with the intention of making sure that we have documents available for the community that they are entitled to. On this website now, there's a transparency tab that has warrant lists that go back to 2021, financial reports going back to 2021. I think it'll come up to roughly around June or July, when we'll be uploading all information we have to keep it as current as possible. There still is some hiccups in the process. So, if there's anything that you need in the meanwhile, please feel free to email me at jhouse@vldalton.org, so that we can provide the information. Additionally, the Clerk's office has worked as well with the Communications in the website. And the meeting minutes and agendas will also be posted by the end of this week. So, we want to make sure that everybody's aware of this. And I'm told she's showing out right now, because she has ordinances and resolutions going online as well. So, we are happy to start making strides towards transparency, and that's the intention of this announcement. Announcement number two, we are pleased to let everybody know that on January 27th in this building, there will be a town hall meeting, because no action will be taken, where Lori Lightfoot will give her closeout report at that time. So, we're pleased to let everyone know that that will be scheduled. I think my third statement or comment is, oops, January 27th, Monday, January 27th. I want to say 6:30. The time will be posted, and we will put it, we will also do an email blast. So, I'll say tentatively 6:30, but don't hold me to that. Third announcement is for everybody that's here in the room and seeing all of the smiling faces and great energy. I really want to say from the trustees to say thank you to the residents. Residents, you empower us as trustees. There was a point in time when we would go in the meetings and you'd get beat up, and you're, and it was given the impression that we were trying to do things to stop progress. And at different points, you start to question almost your sanity and say, "Okay, are we doing the right thing, or are we not?" And it's the encouragement of the many faces in this room, with Sheri, Valerie, Mary, Faniah, don't get me, I can't call everybody out, Dan Lee. So, we really, we really lean on your support. And that gives us the fuel needed to continue moving forward every day. So, we really want to give a heartfelt thank you. And more than that, there's an ongoing or new dialogue that people are trying to push, "Well, don't worry about that, they're outsiders." And they're trying to pit us outsiders versus insiders. Outsiders, I want to say, welcome to Dalton.
All right.
If it were not for the assistance of these outsiders, then many of these things could not be discussed and exposed, and many of the lessons learned would not happen. So, I want to say thank you to those who have taken the time and given all feedback, positive, negative. We hear it all, and we do our best to move forward in that vein. And once this next phase comes, don't go anywhere, we still need you. So, I want to make sure we gave that heartfelt thank you as well to all that come. That being said, I'm going to conclude the general announcements, and we'll move next to the Village Clerk's report.
Good evening, everyone. And I also want to echo what my board has stated, that we are so happy to see you guys. You guys don't know the hell we've been through. And we are going to stand fast and continue to the very end. We're not going to stop until we have victory. We say this all the time, this is a movement. This is not just a regular campaign. This is a movement. This will live on forever. And we expect you all to continue to engage us and engage this town. We don't want you to just leave once we take the seats. We want you to continue to work with us. We want us to work together to bring this community back to what it used to be. I've lived here over 30 years. My children moved, and they're constantly trying to encourage me to move, but I cannot. I have to finish this fight, and I have to continue to stand with you guys for the long haul. So, continue to work with us, because it just doesn't end in February or April. We have a long road ahead of us, and we still need you guys. So, don't walk away. We still need you.
That's right.
So, having said that, I'm going to ask my board to approve my minutes for the month of December the 2nd, 2024, regular board meeting. If you guys can approve the minutes for that day.
Is there a motion to approve the Village Clerk's report and the meeting minutes for December 2nd?
I make a motion to approve the December 2nd, 2024 regular board and trustees meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
There are a motion, a second, any discussion? No discussion, Clerk, please call robe.
Okay, Tammy Brown, I got it right. Jason House.
Aye.
Trustee Norwood.
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Okay, next thing on there is the Village Engineers Report. We do not have a report from the engineer, nor the department reports listed on here. So, we will pass items number eight and nine. Item 10, corporate bills on the electronic warrant list. Trustee Stan Brown. I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing, teasing my fellow trustee. I will read the electronic warrant list into record. We have, there it is. The electronic warrant list, November 30th, 2024, has corporate payments $325,128.15, water fund payments $323,290, sewer fund payments $4,632.70. Total payments on this list, $653,050.85. Our motion that we approve the bills is read. May I ask if there's a second?
Second.
There are a motion, a second, is regarding the funding. Here it is, please call robe.